All right, thank you Scott. Snow asking me in the corner if I would care to join the meeting. So, all right, well, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the virtual meeting of the Edina City Council on Wednesday, November 17th, 2020, Tuesday, actually, November 17th, 2020. And would you call the meeting to order, and then I'm going to read a few things that the, that are pertaining to this meeting. Clerk Ellison, would you do the roll call?
Member Anderson?
Here.
Member Brindle?
Here.
Member Fisher?
Here.
Member Staunton?
Here.
Mayor Hugland?
Here. Well, again, welcome, everybody, to the November 17 meeting of the Edina City Council. The meeting is being held electronically, of course, and that's to comply with Governor Walz's state safe Minnesota order, which was issued in part to ensure the safety of all residents and staff. All the members of the city council, our staff and the presenters are participating from their homes or offices this evening. Before we begin, there's a few things to cover. As you all know by now, the city is committed to continuing to receive and hear your input on matters. We've got different ways of doing that. We've been collecting public input through our city council correspondence web form, voicemail, our engagement website, bettertogetheredina.org. Those are just a few of the ways that you can convey information to the city council. It's important that you know that all the comments submitted have been received and read prior to the meeting, and so you do not need to worry about whether or not your material has been read. Your information and your communications are going to be considered equally regardless of what method you use to submit that information. Tonight, we've only got one opportunity for folks to call in, and that is for community comment. There are no public hearings this evening. And during the community comment portion of the agenda, you may call in and speak about anything that is not on tonight's agenda or scheduled for a future public hearing. The number that you can call if you want to call in for community comment is 800-374-0221, 800-374-0221, and that conference ID number is 1-881149, 1-881149. You'll have three minutes to speak. Our able timer is the city manager, Scott Neal, who will time all the speakers, and he'll let you know if you go over the three-minute mark, and then you'll need to wrap up your comments. So, remember, you do not need to call in tonight unless you're so disposed. If you've already provided feedback, that'll be sufficient for our purposes. Well, thanks in advance for your patience as we work with all of this technology online using different software types and almost 20 people participating to make this meeting a success. We hope there won't be any issues, but if there are, we'll try to get them fixed as quickly as possible, including any problems that pop up for Member Anderson. So, we hope he doesn't have any this evening. Now, we have done roll call, and next thing is the Pledge of Allegiance, so I will rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We have a form of meeting agenda in front of us this evening. Is there anyone who wishes to modify the agenda in any form or fashion? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the meeting agenda as shown.
So moved.
Second.
Member Brindle moves, Member Fisher seconds. The approval of the meeting agenda, any further discussion? Roll call, please, Ms. Ellison, with respect to adoption of the meeting agenda.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Brindle?
Aye.
Member Fisher?
Aye.
Member Staunton?
Aye.
Mayor Hugland?
Aye.
The next matter on the agenda is community comment, and we just talked about that a couple of minutes ago. So, call in now at 800-374-0221 if you want to get into the queue to speak to the council about a matter of concern to you that's not on the agenda this evening or a matter scheduled for a future public hearing. The conference ID number again is 1-881149, 1-881149. You'll be given three minutes to speak. The person working on this for us will get you into the speaking queue, and Director Bennerott will bring you in front of the council. Director Bennerott, do we have anybody waiting to speak to the city council?
Good evening, Mayor Hugland and members of the council. Our first caller tonight is Lori Groats. Operator, will you please unmute the line of Ms. Lori Groats? And Lori, please begin by stating your full name and address for the record.
Ms. Groats, you're with us live. If you can hear me, you can go ahead anytime you're ready. Director Bennerott, can you check to see if she was able to get on?
Actually, Scott Denfeld, I think you need to unmute their line.
Actually, with that, Director Bennerott, the intercall will have to unmute themselves. As the host, I'm only able to send them a request to unmute themselves, so I'm hopefully, hoping they can do that within WebEx.
All right, let me communicate with the operator.
All right. Ms. Groats, if you can hear us, stand by, we're trying to fix this communication issue. You know, as we wait to get that issue corrected, we could, Manager Neal, do your response to community comments from two weeks ago.
We had two, we had two questions or comments from community comment at our, at our meeting, our first meeting in November. The first was a question raised by Ms. Groats, and I was wondering if she was going to comment on it tonight, and that is whether or not she could have access to our project docs software so that she would be able to have the same level of review of some building plans that, that she was interested in seeing, that she would have but for the pandemic. We had had some discussion about this inside, from staff earlier this year. I had a chance to talk with David Fisher, our building official, and he told me that there was, he, he believed he could figure out a way with the assistance of our IT team to provide kind of read-only access when we have approved plans for, for the site that's in question. So, we think we are going to be able to do that, and, and we're notified, Ms. Groats, of that. The second was also a question about residential redevelopment, and it was a question from, I believe, Mr. Brown, who wondered why we were not requiring builders to do kind of the regular neighborhood meetings for residential redevelopment projects. And that was something that staff had allowed to expire, I think, during kind of the heavier period of infection. We have now, though, ordered that those builders conduct their neighborhood meetings via Zoom or WebEx or some other kind of virtual environment. So, we will resume those neighborhood meetings for projects, newer projects, or projects that are in the early stages of, of review. And that was, so those were the two questions we had.
All right, very good. Well, thank you for being responsive to those inquiries and figuring out solutions. I think that was terrific work. Director Bennerott, any success with intercall yet?
You know, our video production coordinator is saying that he's experiencing something a little different tonight. Typically, as the meeting host, he can unmute and mute lines on his own. He can't do that tonight. He can only send a request to someone to unmute their line. So, let's try it one more time. Scott, if you could send that request to intercall to unmute the line. Kathleen, our operator, will try to unmute it on her end, and then let's see if we can, if we can hear Ms. Groats. Scott, have you sent that request?
Yes, I did send it, so hopefully intercall can unmute themselves now.
All right, Operator Kathleen, if you could try to open the line again, and let's see if we can hear from Ms. Groats.
Thank you, Director Bennerott and Mr. Denfeld. Lori Groats, can you hear me?
I think that they can hear us, we just can't hear them tonight.
Okay.
Yeah, they're telling me her line is open, but we, we just can't hear. We have two callers tonight, both Lori Groats and Andrew Brown. I'm not, I'm not really sure what to do to move on, it just doesn't look like intercall is going to be able to get that line truly open for us tonight.
Is there some other way that we could direct them to communicate with the council so that we could at least understand what their concerns are?
Well, certainly, they can fill out the council correspondence form or use bettertogetheredina.org. Of course, if they want to send it an email directly to you, they can write to citycouncil@edinamn.gov.
Yeah, I was just thinking of what, some way they communicate, could communicate with you quickly. You could maybe check your email, and then we could at least get the question in front of the council.
Sure. So, Lori and Andy, if you heard that, if you want to email me at jaybennerott@edinamn.gov, I can read any comments that you have. The operator is also suggesting that we try to introduce Mr. Andy Brown at this point. Operator, if you want to go ahead and open that line, and let's see if we can hear him Doesn't, doesn't sound like it.
Well, this is the first
It is.
Kind of a problem, so. But I think your, your advice to them is a good one. I wish we could hear them personally, but if they could send an email message, you can convey that information to us, and we could just, now, I think, proceed with other parts of the agenda while we're waiting for that information or those inquiries to come in. We have a, we have a consent agenda in front of us. I'm going to remove, going to ask to remove 6C for clarification purposes. Does any other council member wish to have an item removed from the consent agenda? All right. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of 6C?
So moved.
Member Fisher moves?
Second.
Member Staunton, seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adopting the items on the consent agenda in a single motion with the exception of 6C? Roll call, please.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Brindle?
Aye.
Member Fisher?
Aye.
Member Staunton?
Aye.
Mayor Hugland?
Aye. The items on the consent agenda with the exception of 6C are approved. 6C, Chief Schmitz, I think we all received a letter from Bill Griffith, the attorney for 7500 York after the first reading with regard to the proposed amendment of Chapter 18 of the city fire prevention and protection. The letter essentially asks for verification that 7500 York or any other building that meets the criteria for this particular ordinance, if approved on a second reading basis, would indeed have 12 years to retrofit their building to accommodate an automatic sprinkler system. Would you, could you verify that with respect to Appendix M?
Yes, Mayor and council members, Appendix M, Section 04, schedule, with the fire code official, in our case, it would be the Fire Marshal, not later than 365 days after receipt of a written notice of violation, the compliance schedule shall not exceed 12 years for automatic sprinkler system retrofit. They will have 12 years to complete the work after they submit their plan, and they have to do that within 365 days.
After receipt of a written notice of violation?
Correct.
Okay. All right, very good. That prompt any other questions from council members? Member Fisher?
Yeah, my question is, my understanding is, it's very few buildings we're talking about. Have we talked to the various, has there been at least one conversation with each of the affected properties? So, so we don't hear that their first interaction with this is when they get the notice of noncompliance.
Yes. From our knowledge, we believe there are two buildings in our city, 6400 Berry and 7500 York, that would fall into this category. We, after the first reading, the Fire Marshal sent letters and emails to each of these property owners. We heard back from the 7500 group, and that's the letter you received. I'm not sure if we have received any correspondence from the 6400 Berry Road property owners.
Right, but we sent correspondence, they shouldn't. Go ahead.
Yeah, we, I would just confirm with Fire Marshal Hammer Schmidt, we did inform them that they needed to contact the council members if they had questions regarding this. So, from what I'm understanding is, 6400 Berry did not reach out to any of our council members.
Yeah, Mayor, council members, that is correct. I did reach out to both, like the chief said, both emails and letters, only heard back from 7500.
Thank you, Fire Marshal.
Thank you.
Any other questions for council members? Would someone care to move on a second reading basis the approval of Ordinance 2020-15, which amends Chapter 18 of the city code fire prevention and protection requirements?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Member Anderson, second by Member Brindle, any further discussion? Roll call, please, with respect to the adoption of the motion as stated.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Brindle?
Aye.
Member Fisher?
Aye.
Member Staunton?
Aye.
Mayor Hugland?
Aye. Motion passes. Ordinance is approved on the second reading basis, or just approved, I should say.
And now, on to correspondence and petitions. Manager Neal, anything, anything come in that we need to be aware of, or Clerk Ellison?
Mayor Hugland, I do have Mr. Andy Brown's community comment sent to me via email, if you'd like me to read it at this time.
Yes, I was just going to come back to you here as we finish up this matter on the agenda, so please convey Mr. Brown's question.
So, this message comes from Andy Brown at 5512 Park Place. His question is, when can we fast-track the replacement of the Lewis Ridge and Strackour warming houses?
Okay, thank you. We'll get the response on that two weeks from now.
I have Lori back on the line. Operator, can you try to unmute Lori's line and, and see if we can hear her this time?
Excuse me, Ms. Groats, your line is now open.
Yay!
Thank you. Council, can you hear me?
We can, Ms. Groats. Welcome.
Okay, thanks, thank you so much, thank you for your patience. Okay, my comment tonight is about Better Together, and the city is using Better Together, Better Together as a major means of communications with the community. The city uses a third-party vendor for this, bang the table. Anybody can go to Better Together and read the information that is there. In order to participate, if you want to give a comment, you need to register, and for that, you need to give a screen name, email, and password. I don't know what they do with that information, I really don't care to sit and read the privacy policy with it. However, the city, and I've had this conversation when Better Together first came out with MJ. The city also uses third-party vendors for a couple of other websites, Novus Agenda and MuniCode. Now, anyone can, in the city, can use Novus Agenda or MuniCode without having to register. I don't think that residents should have to register in order to use a city website that we are already paying for. And they also ask optional questions such as your age range, the gender I most identify with, whether or not I rent or own my house, my race or ethnicity that I identify with, and my household income. Now, none of this information is statistically significant, and I would question whether some of it or not is actually legal to ask. If you're applying for a job, they can't ask you what your age is, whether you own a house, what your income is, what your gender is. I don't think they should be having to do that. Also, you can make public comment for a public hearing on there, or you can give a community comment. Now, tonight, when I call in to give my comment on community comment, or if I'm going to give it during a public hearing, the only two pieces of information that I need to give are my name and my address. I don't see why I should be held to a higher standard in order to use another city website, Better Together. Now, MJ or whoever is making the decision, they have the, they, they're making the decision that you have to register to use it. I don't like that. I think if someone wants to make a comment, they should be able to make a comment, and I think it's insulting to be asking what the optional, optional questions are. So, I wish that you would change this. I will not participate on Better Together. I don't know what happens with my information when I put down my email and so forth down there, and so I think you should change that. And I guess that's about all tonight. Thank you for your patience on this.
Well, thank you, Ms. Groats. We'll take a look at that issue.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good night.
Thanks again, everyone, for your patience tonight. We did have Andy Brown call back in, so operator, at this point, if you would please unmute the line of Mr. Andy Brown, and Andy, please begin by stating your full name and address for the record.
Andrew Brown, your line is now open.
Thank you. Andy Brown, 5512 Park Place in Edina? Sorry, just wanted to ask again about the Lewis Ridge and Strackour warming houses, hoping that Edina can actually fast-track those. I know they're on the unfunded CIP list. That's rather a significant disappointment. Those are two very well-used resources by the city. Edina was recently named as the heart of the hockey community by ESPN Online, so, by one of their, by their staff. So, those resources have been there longer than I've been alive, so it's, it's fully depreciated, and it's really time to, to make that investment in the, in the community. And I understand we've got a lot of other needs and things that are going on, but it's, there are two resources that are widely used by, by those neighborhoods, and that's really where lots of generations learn how to skate and learn how to play and use it all year round. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
I do not have any other callers on the line. You might want to wait a minute or so before moving on, as there is a slight delay in the broadcast, though we could also argue that we've had a lot of time for people to call in tonight. I'm looking at my clock, it says 7:25. I will let you know when it's 7:26, or if I have a caller, whichever comes first. 26, I think you may move on. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thanks for working diligently, get that problem solved, so our residents could call in and express their concerns on the matters that they discussed. We're on to aviation noise update. Member Brindle, anything there?
Um, let's see here, the next Noise Oversight Committee meeting is tomorrow evening at 6 o'clock. It's a call-in meeting, and that's, that's all I have.
Thank you. Let's go to Mayor and Council comments, and Member Anderson, you want to lead us off this evening?
No, I don't have anything this evening, but thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. I thought we had your microphone working, this was better.
I understand. If something, if I'm inspired, maybe I'll come back.
All right. Member Staunton?
Nothing for me, thanks.
Member Fisher?
I would just make the comment that, you know, the little glitch tonight is a reminder of how many things can potentially go wrong in these meetings, and we've actually, staff has done such a great job to minimize all these potential hurdles. It, it did cause me a little concern, the little glitch we had tonight, if that were to happen, you know, in a few weeks where we have massive public hearings scares me a little bit. So, whatever we need to do with our, however, whatever's happening behind the curtain, hopefully we can get that figured out before some of those public hearings. But kudos to staff for really making almost all of these meetings be pretty, pretty flawless.
Thank you. Member Brindle?
Thank you. Just a couple of things, as I am leaving this council at the end of the year, so, there's a couple of committees that I work on that I would like to encourage the council to make sure that we continue to have representation on. One is the 494 Corridor Commission. There is a project in, in the peak of planning, which is 494 to 169 reconstruction and, and upgrade in that area, and so I would encourage the council to, to continue to have representation on 494. And so, so I'm leaving that, and the chair, the current chair, Brad Aho, is also leaving that. Brad is from Eden Prairie, and so you've got two people who have been on that commission a long time, and so I think it's going to be very important to have someone on that commission. And then aviation, so that I represent the at-large cities at the dais for the Noise Oversight Committee, and, and I can certainly do that beyond the time of my term as a city council member, if the council were to appoint me to continue to do that. It's a conversation that I've had in the past with Councilmember Staunton, who very much liked to have me continue in this. There's quite a bit of technical stuff that you learn along the way, and so I'm certainly willing to continue through the term of this responsibility. My current term ends in the summer of 2021, so, so I could continue through that time, or I could continue longer than that, beyond the point of representing the at-large cities. So, it's, I mean- So, it's, I mean, it's completely up to you when you want to consider that.
All right. Thank you. And no policy prohibition that you can think of, nothing that's providing guidance from the standpoint of rules or regulations or policies from the MAC or the Noise Oversight Committee itself that would preclude you from, from continuing to serve?
No, it just needs to be either. So, the members of the Noise Oversight Committee are city staff, city electeds, people appointed by six, by, by city councils, and then carriers, the airline industry. And so, I, after I had this conversation the first time with Member Staunton, I asked the folks on the NOC, Brad Jufur and Dana Nelson, both are MAC staff members, and Brad is the liaison to the NOC. I asked if there was any, anything standing in the way of, of serving if appointed by the council. And he said, absolutely. He said, we'll take you as long as you want to be on the NOC.
All right. Good. That's good to hear. All right. So, Manager Neil, when could our council have that conversation? Is there an appropriate time to be doing that? Or tonight? Could we, could we endorse this notion that Member Brendel continue on after the first of the year? Or is there some other timing to it that you prefer? We can't hear you. It looks like we should be able to hear you. No? Okay. No?
You probably bumped the little button right here on your headset, Scott.
Okay. Now, Mel?
Yes. Good.
Yep.
Yeah?
Any other IT help you need, you let me know.
Yeah. Our tech, though, is...
The...
Or Fisher.
The MAC has, has agreed to sort of waive its policy with regards to elected official, not-elected official. But, but they do ask us to have a formal declaration or an appointment resolution by the council. So, I think we can queue that up either for your December 1st or your 15th meeting.
All right. Very good. That's a good way.
The other option would be to, you know, do it at the first meeting when we do our official appointments in the next year.
Yeah.
In case the new, the two new council members may have perspectives on it.
Sure.
And if, and if they're opposed, we can appoint one of them.
That'll teach them.
There you go.
Yeah. I mean, that would be the other time we could do it. And that's the, that's a, that's probably a more appropriate time, given that we are doing a lot of appointments on that day.
That and the mayor is the weed inspector.
Yep.
Yeah. There you go. And Member Brendel, what, what day of the month do these meetings get held?
Third Wednesday.
All right. So, we're safe making that appointment in early January with our new council members present?
Yes. January would, it's, the meetings are every other month on the third Wednesday.
Okay. All right. Well, I think that's a good thought from Member Staunton. We should wait until our new colleagues are here and address it at our first meeting in January.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else, Member Brendel?
Nope. Just have a nice Thanksgiving.
Thank you. That's a sentiment, I'm sure, shared broadly here. A nice, safe Thanksgiving. I got a couple of things here, too, as Member Brendel did. I've had one of our residents who calls me consistently about organized hauling. What are we doing about organized hauling? And of course, I was reminded today from a conversation I had with Manager Neil that the ETC has this matter on their 2021 work plan. And you may have all recalled that. I thought it was on EEC's work plan, but it's on the ETC work plan. So, I'll let that person know about that. That's something that we're working on. And then, composting was the other thing that I've been forgetting to raise with all of you. I know that on Friday, October 23rd, Manager Neil sent out an email to all of us, which was a special report on the organics recycling program. I've had quite a few calls from a variety of our residents. I would say mostly single-person households, not necessarily seniors, but probably predominantly seniors that, you know, don't use it, don't create any compost, don't like the idea that they're being assessed 550, like every other household in Edina, and are wondering about, is there some sort of variation in the program or distinction we can make in the program between those that might be in a certain category? Not necessarily an opt-out category, because I think that has its own inherent risk. But right now, as you recall, we've got, we're covering 90%, 96% of the total monthly operational costs, assessing 13,600 households, 550 a month. And I would say that I was getting more calls a month or so ago, or two months ago, than I am now. But the same folks are consistently calling, wondering if the council would consider addressing this matter and think about having some kind of a tiered system. Even if folks were asked to participate that are from these single-family households, they'd like to participate at a level lower than 550. Of course, I said that's all a council decision to make. We have done this, we have implemented this program for a specific purpose, started by the requirements of Hennepin County to diminish the amount of trash that we were producing going into the landfills. But, and then, everybody else is going to have to be going on this program, I think, next year in 2021. Other cities are a little bit behind us on the implementation. But I just was wondering if other council members were getting calls, number one, and number two. If so, or regardless, have you given any thought to whether the system that we've implemented is the system that we should continue with? Or whether there's something we might think about doing for people that are not producing any composting because of the nature of their households? Not, I'm not thinking about an opt-out program, as I mentioned earlier. But some other sort of tiered rate structure, I suppose, would be an appropriate way to put it. Or at least, maybe I just raise the issue now for, for some consideration by folks. And maybe the rest of you can tell me whether you've been getting some of these calls as well. Has anybody else been getting these calls? Member Anderson?
Yes. Thank you. I, actually, I had one earlier today, and it was very direct. So, I, and I, you know, I understand that people express concerns about something they feel like they're not using. And they, they evaluate that on the basis of if I'm not using it, then there's no value. So, why am I, I understand that perfectly. And we talked through that at length. I had several calls, as you did, some time ago. Now, the same caller today had just received their tax statement and wanted to discuss that as well. So, it's probably more prompted by the tax statement arrival, and that was also a background story. But yes, I think that there is concern, and almost entirely on the basis of single-family households. And there was initially, I believe, a lot of concern expressed relative to the container itself. But Manager Neil reversed course on that. The containers were removed if somebody decided they weren't participating in the program. And still, the charge is there. So, yeah, I'm hearing it. I'm sure others are as well. But the program itself is, I think, working very well. We are, we're getting a lot of people who are getting used to it and utilizing it. The numbers speak for themselves. They, it's a productive program. I, just on a, on a personal basis, I struggled with it initially. Oh, how am I going to do this? Why am I? But, you know, what's interesting is, is that when you start beginning to consider, how do I do it? How do I really kind of organize this? Lucky to have a daughter who's all in. And so, you know, she's been useful in saying, well, you don't know that. You could do it this way. And when I look at the, at the amount of solid waste that's not going into landfill and that we are, we're moving out, I, I think that's a, that's, that's a, that's a big hit. So, but yes, we're all getting phone calls. Thank you.
Yeah. Those are well-placed comments. In our household, too, I wrestled with it at first. I ought to do it. We wanted to do it. And now, we've come to really appreciate it and really like the program. And I was able to order a smaller trash container for the other solid waste, you know, which I'm producing about a bag a week, a small bag. So, there are benefits the other way as well. And there are, of course, costs that our residents pay that are for the common good that don't have anything to do with particular user benefit. Although, I think most folks would think that property taxes we all pay, you're, you're getting a lot of benefit, broad benefit out of the taxes you pay for living in Edina. So, anybody else getting calls?
I have. I have not recently.
Okay.
But in the, in the distant past, I have.
Let me just raise the issue tonight. You folks give it some thought, and we'll address it maybe sometime in December if we have time at a meeting. Yes. Member Fisher?
I, I would just say, you know, I don't know how much time we'll have to address it in our meetings in December. But, you know, I've gotten some emails about this. And I guess I struggle with the, the comment that I don't use it. That's a choice. I, I can't believe there's anybody that doesn't have any compostable items in their household. If they don't, that's amazing to me, because I don't, I don't know how that would work. And, and so, that argument doesn't work for me. The argument that works for me, potentially, is if there's a financial hardship. And, and I'm seeing that from some of our particularly senior members of the community. It might be a single widow, something like that, and, and they have a hardship. And that's more about our affordable housing conversation. And are we actually going to great lengths to create affordable housing and then adding things that make it more difficult? But even that argument is, is hard for me, because we, we have to, to make this program work, we have to have a uniform measure and stick to it and, and plow through it. And so, what I would encourage people to do is use it. You're paying for it, and that's the point. You're paying for it regardless, so find a way to use it. Make it benefit you, and you can have less garbage. I know for our household, we, you know, we weren't doing anything like this. A learning curve for us, and we, we've definitely found the methods that work for our household. But it required change. It required changing our habits. Couple of weeks ago, by the way, I, we smelled something in our regular garbage bin, and it allowed me to launch a full investigation to figure out who in the family actually put something that would have a smell in our garbage bin. So, there are some benefits. So, but I, I've found it to be a very, as much as, you know, we, we manage the change. We've dealt with it, and I think it's, it's ultimately been a, a good thing. And I just would hope that people would give it a chance.
Yeah.
Did you find who ate the cherries, Captain Quee?
I can't give up any of the information from the case. It's ongoing.
Mr. Mayor, I would just chime in to say, you know, this is, this is the kind of thing that is going to take some time to change. I, I agree with all the comments that have made, been made until now. And all I would suggest is, rather than us kind of taking it up formally as we're hearing these comments, maybe we calendar it for the one-year anniversary to have a report and discuss how it's going. And if we make some adjustments, we make them then. And do it on an annual basis instead of having to make a decision, meeting by meeting, about whether we're going to revisit this.
Yeah. I think that's a good idea. That's kind of the conclusion I had come to it. I listened to my colleagues, was that let's, let's stay the course for now and get to some anniversary date, and then, and then reassess it. I think that one-year anniversary date's a, a good date. I know we had this conversation in the context of recycling. And I think we were told that the same sort of difficulties were in place when we started recycling. And now, it's a very popular program in Edina. And you don't, at least, I don't have anybody calling me saying they don't want to pay their recycling fees. It's a part of life and part of living in a city. So, okay. Let's, let's do that. That's helpful. That was a good discussion and very helpful to me. Thank you. There's two other little things. Stu Henderson, who is, Stuart Henderson, who is the CEO of Western National Insurance Group, headquartered here in Edina. I got an announcement from his office today that he has been inducted into the Insurance Business America Magazine's 2020 Hall of Fame. He's been just a terrific corporate citizen. One of their big sponsorships is of Veep. It seems like whenever Veep's needed vehicles, Western National's been there to provide him with, with vehicles, either new or used. They're tremendous supporters of that food shelf program. And they've been wonderful supporters of the Edina Community Foundation, too. And I know that Stu has done just a wonderful job of leading that company to great success. So, to see him inducted into the Hall of Fame for his industry is noteworthy. And I wanted to make sure I mentioned it to my colleagues and that it went out to be recorded, so that other people in our community could appreciate that as well. And then, the last thing was a conversation I had today with our former colleague, Ann Swenson, who was anticipating that the governor was going to announce today that there wasn't going to be any indoor hockey. I don't know if that occurred or not. But it did, it did cause me to think about the, you know, the data that we've looked at, or I've seen, shows that the kids playing hockey have the highest rate of contraction of COVID. So, if the governor did do something, it wouldn't surprise me to cause me then to think about outdoor activities. And if we're going to try to give these kids a place to exercise and blow off some steam that love hockey so much, I wonder about, you know, our outdoor rinks are really well-used. But if we do get in a situation where indoor hockey is prohibited, can we make an extra special effort this year to make sure that our ice outdoors is just in top-notch form, whether, whether cooperating, of course? Make sure that we've got outdoor seating for the kids. It seems to me that we might even think about making it the best experience we can, kind of like we do with the outdoor rink. Is there any chance that we, we have some heaters that we can use at some of the rinks and put them outside the warming houses? Because we're not going to be using the warming houses. The bathrooms may be available for use. And I think we're going to probably have attendants around. Scott, do you know anything about that? Will, will there be attendants there if kids are playing outdoors or people are just over leisure, leisurely skating? They can have access to a restroom facility?
I'm going to talk about that whole issue during my report, Mr. Mayor, if you want to.
Oh. How about that? All right. Okay. I'll hold off. Let's wait for your comments, and then we'll go there. So, that's it for me. Manager Neil?
Okay. Well, let me get to that one, because that one doesn't have such a happy ending. But I do, I've got some data that I want to show you tonight, too. One thing I want to start with is, earlier today, I think, council members, including council members-elect, you should have received an appointment or urging you, an email urging you to get your, sign up for your new photo. It's important this year to get new photos of the existing council members and the council members-elect. We're going to get you in the council chambers, because we're going to assemble a group photo from individual photos this year. So, that, so when you get that email, read it and, and sign up for a slot. I also wanted to let you know that things have come together for our annual state legislative delegation joint meeting with the city council. It'll be Wednesday, January 20th, from 5:30 to 6:30. So, we'll use our work session that evening. The three legislators have agreed to attend that night. So, that's a go. I wanted to say, give some recognition to Chad Milner and Stephanie Hawkinson for being the chief shepherds, from a staff standpoint, of two major task force efforts that reached milestones tonight. I mentioned earlier, the presentation of the Housing Strategy Task Force to the Human Rights and Relations Commission meeting for their first review. And of course, the review of the Street Funding Task Force by the council earlier tonight. Takes a lot of effort, both on the volunteer side and the staff side, to bring those task forces from, from beginning, middle to end. We're very appreciative of the volunteer work that we get. And I appreciate the work the staff does to make that all happen for you. Finally, I want to show you a couple of slides that show our current COVID-19 infection rate. And I'm going to ask Mr. Denfeld if he... rate, and I'm going to ask Mr. Denfeld if he can show those to us right now. So this, let me tell you what you're looking at here. This is a slide showing you the, the change in the seven-day average, seven-day rolling average of new cases per 100,000 population. This information is, it comes to us from Bloomington Public Health, comes to them from, from the Minnesota Department of Health, and what you're looking at is, is just the comparative rates of change from Bloomington, Edina, Richfield, the county, Hennepin County and, and the state. And what you see is obvious, that things were moving, some sort of spiking here and there from April to October, but in about the second week of October, we really began to spike. And so the, the end of that spiking period that you're seeing on this graph is about the first week of November. So that's everybody's together. Next slide is Edina. And what you're looking at here is, again, that's, that same metric, it's the seven-day rolling average of new cases per 100,000 population. And we've got a couple of, of milestones that are shown in, in this, in this graphic. The first one is in April, the first stay-at-home order from the governor's office, then when that order was lifted, and then later in July, when there was a statewide mask mandate, and of course, where we are today. So when you think about where infection rates were in the beginning of this process, when we were making all those decisions about, do we close our parks, do we open our parks, do we close the arena, are we going to have a swimming pool open for the year, we were making a lot of those decisions in sort of that early April, May time period, when the infection rates at that point were anywhere from five to 10 per 100,000 population. The infection rate, when you look at the spike, that was in the middle of July, that's when we declared, that's when council was having a lot of discussion about, should we have a masking mandate, right? There weren't, there weren't very many cities that were having masking mandates at that time, it was, it was, that was cutting edge. Remember, Mankato had one, maybe Minneapolis had one in place, but we were the first suburban community to sort of lead the way for a, a local mask mandate, and a lot of discussion about, should we do it, what are the civil liberty impacts of it, how are we going to enforce it, all of that. That was happening right about that time when that spike was happening in July. And so our, our infection rate at that point, it got up to about 35. Our infection rate on November 12th, 2020, the very end of this graph, was 59. So 10 times what it was when we were making decisions about, shall we open or close City Hall, double what was happening when we were making decisions about, shall we have a mandatory masking policy or not. We've had 1,740 people infected as of this week, and 51 deaths in Edina. So that infection rate is, is troublesome, and it is, it is beginning to push us, push the governor into making some decisions, and we do anticipate he's going to announce some, some additional restrictions tomorrow, either late afternoon or early evening, is what we're hearing now, that could impact youth sports. Because, because, Mr. Mayor, you, as you noted, we're seeing a fair amount of, of infection surge from kids that are participating in youth sports, and bringing that, that, that infection back to their family, back to their parents and neighbors and so forth. So one of the things that we're talking about as staff, both internally and in Bloomington and, and Richfield, is what are we, are we going back, are we, are we getting ready to dial back some of the things that we had reopened when, when infection rates were lower and somewhat more stable? And I, and I think the answer is yes, under the, under the public health emergency that we have, that we took, that we put in place in March and reaffirmed a couple of times during the year, we may need to do that. You know, when I think back to that, that early year, kind of April to July time period, I was giving you updates, you know, a couple of times a day on what's open and what's closed, and what are we thinking about closing, and what are we thinking about opening, we're, we're back, we're probably back to that. So we're beginning to have some discussions with our colleagues in Bloomington and Richfield, started them last week, they'll pick up this week, about what they're closing, what we're closing, we're talking to our peers also in cities to the west and, and north of us too, because as you recall, when we think about, when we make closure decisions around park and rec amenities, as soon as we close our pool, that pushes people who want to swim in pools to somewhere else, and so there's some, there's some benefit to concerted effort when we look at, look at what we're going to do with other communities. So we are talking about that, I'm talking about it with, with Perry Vetter, and he's talking about it with his peers, but I just wanted to let you know that, that we're, we're in a, we're in a place right now that's pretty serious compared to where we have been in the past as a, as a community with our infection rates, and we, we need to do something about it. So we're working on some plans to do that, and talking with staff tomorrow about some of, some of what we're going to need to do here in the near future. I'm happy to take any questions about that.
Council members, any questions, comments?
Makes me feel pretty good about our Rotary Club's decision to go 100% virtual.
Yeah, this is, sorry, it's to put a damper on the end of a, a meeting like this, but it really, the numbers, the numbers speak for themselves, and we really have to kind of take this on again, and, and of, of course, as our chief policymakers, you'll be part of that. Things that we have to make decisions, some of them do involve council action, so we'll bring those to you as, as quickly as we can.
While, while you were talking, I was looking over at my email, and there's a request from Dean Commissioner Grove to meet with mayors at 5 o'clock tomorrow virtually, for 15 minutes, so I'm, I'm guessing he's going to tell us in advance what the governor's going to talk about shortly thereafter.
I think it's probably true.
And then it seems to me that depending on what the governor says, as I recall, we could be potentially more restrictive, or no more restrictive, I guess.
Well, well, depends on what we're talking about, but if you're talking about our own sort of park and rec enterprise amenities, our property, our facilities, we can be as restrictive as we choose to be as a city.
Okay.
So that's, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right. All right, we'll wait to see what he has to say. Is it going to require, going to require any special meetings potentially, if, and we've done that in the past?
Potentially. It's been a while since we've called you all up and got you in on a special meeting, but that's, I can foresee that as a possibility here, depending on what gets announced tomorrow.
Right. Well, I'll, I'll give you a call as soon as I finish that call with the mayors at 5.
Great, thank you.
All right.
City of Bloomington put a, an emergency order in place on Friday.
Right, they had, like a lot, like many other cities, they, they allowed theirs to lapse their previous state of emergency.
Okay.
And we did not, Richfield did not.
Okay.
Does anyone have anything else? All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Member Brendel moves. Member Fisher seconds. Any further discussion? Roll call please with respect to adjournment.
Member Anderson?
Hi.
Member Brendel?
Hi.
Member Fisher?
Hi.
Member Staunton?
Hi.
Mayor Hublin?
Hi. We stand adjourned, and we've also already canceled the walk with the mayor for the indefinite future, so that even though we were going to be outside, we're canceling that as well.
All right.
And then, that's all, that's all you need to know.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Good night.